First order of business, approve the minutes. It's September 24th, 2015.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September 24th, 2015.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion regarding the dog park. I do have an email from Chris Ward open here. We can reach out to him. But again, the gentleman I wanted to discuss it could make it. Okay. Most of the table.
Yeah, are we going to table just until you come to make it here? Can I make most of the table for dog park discussion until?
Twenty second.
Twenty second.
Eight o'clock meeting, so everybody know. Because I have a field trip, we don't get back till seven thirty, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye. I'm so excited.
Next order of business is appointments. Appointments for family services advisory boards, student representative, the dam and lake management advisory committee, and the north central board of health representative.
Before we make any motions, can I just clarify, are we only picking one of these guys?
Yes, we actually had two, two students. Two students have expressed some interest. Damon Reynolds. We actually received an email from his instructor at the school. This is one of his juniors, Damon Reynolds, who said he would like to take part in this opportunity. His email is here. Reach out to him. The other one was Caitlin Kirshoffer. And there's a letter to the board of selection from Caitlin expressing her interest in certain.
I'll start. I thought about this last night. I knew that there were two students. And I think we're always looking for volunteers. We're always looking for people to do things. And I think we need to put both of them on because we can't turn anybody away. If we have people who are going to volunteer in our community, what message are we sending them if we say, no, we don't need you? Maybe they could alternate meetings? I don't know, but I'm not comfortable saying no to someone who wants to help.
I think it's a great idea. I know one of them, and I don't know the other one. One of them wrote a nice letter to the other one. So I wouldn't want to choose just from that either, invite them if they're running against each other or two on, if there's an ordinance against that, whatever the right word is, two on there sounds like.
I don't know the ordinance.
The reason, the reason for this, one of the main reasons for this is for the Demus grant that we get. So I'm not sure if we can physically appoint.
There is a place for two representatives. Or you have, right, we appointed Maddie last week. I mean, because there's a girl mentioned, there'd be a boy. I don't know, I'm not comfortable. I mean, we're always looking for people in Stafford to be on committees and volunteer. We're nagging, we'll give you $20 to be on this committee. We're nagging people. Now we're going to tell someone who don't have Rome. I don't know, I'm not.
Right.
So.
I know.
And I don't know if we're allowed to put in addition to that.
Well, maybe we can find out when we. Thank you.
Yep.
I was losing sleep about it last night because I couldn't choose. There's no way I could choose against two good kids. And I know them both.
Are they both in secondary?
I think one could be a senior and one a junior. Or they, actually, I think they both could be juniors.
Yeah, Caitlin's a junior. And then an email from.
Damon.
Regarding Damon.
He's a junior too, one of my juniors.
Yes.
Just goes to say we picked one that's going to be the one. The other one.
And I think Maddie Naskovitz could be a sophomore.
Okay, Karen's looking into that.
How about we do the others?
Yeah.
Okay. I will like to add Donovan, Cheryl, Mckay, I guess, Milanovich, Thomas Finch, to the dam and lake management advisory board. Two-year term expiring 10/15/2018.
2017, sorry, I made a mistake.
Okay. And Dawn Maslik to the north central district board of health representatives to expire February 25th, 2016.
All second that. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bible. Good to have one. Are you still on that or yep, move on?
So it's actually, the board must be at minimum seven members. And that the youths, the youth members are non-voting members. And at least one needs to be 21.
None are 21.
I mean, under 21, sorry. I can't imagine that, it would hurt because it's at least seven members. It doesn't say that it can't be more than that. Yep, it doesn't, right, because it is not voting. I know when I used to work at a family services, it was a struggle to find people that had a desire to serve. And they were interested in, and when you're finding two youth, three, because there's already one here. Can't see that it affects the grant in any way.
Very good, yeah.
So I'll make a motion to add Damon Reynolds and Caitlin Kirshoffer to the family service advisory board student representative, expiring 3/1, 2016. And thank you, Karen, for checking that.
Second half. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, discussion in action regarding family services new licensing requirements. You both had a letter here from Judy Gardner, the executive director of family services. Okay, as, I mean, as we've discussed over the years, we're moving towards trying to make family services more of a neutral. Part of the licensing requirements through the department of public health is that Stafford family services must have a medical director. This would be kept a contracted position. It needs to be booked by a board psychiatrist. We've reached out to Johnson Memorial. We've reached out to St. Francis. We've reached out to, I believe, all of the behavioral health facilities to try to find a psychiatrist. And we've been able to find one that would serve our purpose of family services. That's, that's a cost of approximately $1,000 a month. What we will be able to bring in an additional revenue off of this one person is approximately $3,000 a month. The reason she's requesting, what she's requesting for the remainder of this fiscal year is $8,000 to be transferred from the general fund to the family services budget for the balance of this fiscal year. The revenue that comes in, comes in, goes directly to the general fund. So we have to allocate the money that we're going to pay the psychiatrist into our budget to pay him. We can't just take the revenue that comes in and say, well, you made this money, we're paying you. We have to do that transfer. So we have to request it and settle for the finance for authorization.
Obviously, it's a part-time position.
Yes.
A thousand bucks a month. And basically, this is the payment for November to June.
Correct.
That was made last year with somebody, someone to this?
No, no, we didn't hear. We didn't hear that.
That's what we did.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
And at some point, maybe other people have a better recollection. We did have, we did have a health director, a psychiatrist up there at one point. And I think it was $2,000 or so. That person was in every place. Correct?
APRN?
We have the APRN.
APRN.
Yeah, we also had.
That was before the APRN was there.
And then the APRN came in after the two rounds.
Right, that was the whole look.
Correct. And this is similar.
So are we making a motion to add $8,000 to their budget? Or is this to, you know, to give them from the general fund? Or, well, it's not really a transfer, so I'm not sure what.
Appropriation of $8,000 from the general fund to family services clinical supervisor.
There you go. Make an appropriation to take out the general fund $8,000 allotted to the family services budget to pay for the certified psychiatrist.
All second that. Any further discussion?
Does this go to the board first under $20,000?
No, well, go over to the board of directors.
It'll go to board of directors.
Yes. Hopefully, discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item six, CFO policy in paying part-time elected officials. Letter here from Lisa Baxter, town CFO, which says, "The Board of Assessment Appeals operates on the calendar year starting in January."
Wait, it's, it's to Lisa from the.
Oh, from Aaron.
Oh, like, I don't have that letter.
To Lisa from Mayor Kirshoffer on the Board of Assessment Appeals. "The Board of Assessment Appeals operates on the calendar year starting in January. Our duties continue through the year end. The completion of our annual fall meeting. The Board of Assessment Appeals completed our duties on September 24th of 2015. Therefore, Chair Of Course and I am requesting that the members of the board be paid their annual stipend. If you have any questions about the Board of Assessment Appeals, please do not hesitate to contact me. And then their schedules are here."
What is the stipend? Sorry. I want to say it's like 2100 or the chair or 20.
Two and 12?
Hmm?
Is it two and 12? Two, two thousand?
The other one's in like 19 or 18. Two for the chair and 1925 for the other chair. Which is in the budget.
Okay, so what had happened was when she had submitted the request, there was some questions that came up of when their terms, if they overlap. So it just brought up questions as, do they get paid twice a year? Or do they get paid once a year because of overlapping terms of the election? And the reason it came up was because of the election. And what if we had paid one person the entire amount, but the new person, if there's a new person elected, we would have had money to pay the new person in the next year. So Aaron clarified that all of their work is done within that fiscal year. So, you know, our recommendation in talking with Lisa was it's just as a board, make that, make a policy. And then that way, there's not a question going forward. And Lori doing payroll can have it right in the policy book, and it's there, and it's no questions going forward. So Lisa drafted a policy for us. "The Board of Assessment Appeals operates in a calendar year. They begin meeting in March and finish the process in September. The board's selectmen budget annually stipend for their work. It is the intention of the board of selectmen that the stipend will be paid in October after the final meeting of the Board of Assessment Appeals."
I'll make a motion to make a change in the payment policy for the Board of Assessment Appeals, for them to have one payment in October after all their jobs are completed.
I'll second that. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, informational rights.
Old business. I'd like to take a shot at the old business thing. I hope it keeps us from having any new business. August 13th, we did bring up the Connecticut Green Bank Awards. We had that letter saying we were going to look into some of this stuff. And I'd just like to see, without getting into all the specifics of the email I got, what's been done and where do we stand as to what we have approved and what we don't have to approve. Up on that, is there another way to correct this?
Well, I think that, I think that there is, there's, I think there's a lot to discuss on that. There's a lot of accusations. It's an entitled board. I think that if there's an issue, I think that the, our questions, that the chairman of the board should come to us. You know, that's my feeling.
But for Neil's question.
Yeah.
Coming after later.
We received, we received the grant.
Thirteen.
Assuming he made the motion, there hasn't been a second to discuss.
Oh, I thought it was under informational.
I was going under old business, which August 13th, this was on the agenda. Was this, this letter saying, "We're in, it's 13/5?" So is that appropriate old business?
Only if you give a second.
Okay.
Second, I'll give a second.
Okay, to, to sum it up. We received the grant from the green. Originally, we discussed using it to, using the grant to pay for software for monitoring. The solar systems?
Yes.
That was already something we had discussed in the large project. Tying the large project to the small projects. We already had discussed that. I had suggested that we use that for the software. Then there was a $13,000 grant, or $13,000. The software is $7,000. I had to do a memorandum of understanding with the green bank. So to get the $13,000, which we were able to use it for lighting, I sent them the memorandum of understanding for the lighting. Either one of them is going to be paid for. So what we did to get the full amount was the memorandum of understanding for the lighting. Either one is going to be paid for. You know, what?
They both, we're purchasing both.
Purchasing both, yes. But we're looking, you know, I read Mr. Fisher's email, and, you know, he wants to start monitoring the other solar. But we're not even, we're not ready to go there because the goal is to tie the large solar arrays and the small solar arrays all together in one monitoring system.
So we're not ready to.
For standard solar. So standard solar isn't ready to start doing that, to tie all of those together.
Do we monitor any of it now?
No, not other than Mrs.'s reporting that you do.
What are we monitoring for?
To make sure that they're operating.
To make sure everything's working. So we could just kind of start working, and we don't know what availability gets pulled?
The maintenance people in the, in the buildings have to, you know, try to monitor and keep their, their eyes on the, on the system. But what we want to do is go with an electronic monitoring system. That if something goes wrong or something goes down, it's going to tell us.
At this meeting, we didn't take any action. I didn't see it show up in the notes, and my notes were just, we talked about it.
Yes.
And then came back to the MOE, whatever, revenue. Right, here we go. But do we have to vote on that? Or was that, that came to us that meeting, and we just tabled it? Was there anything?
I don't think there was, I don't think there was an action that needed to be taken.
Okay. That's a good way.
And the money that comes in, the money's going to come in, the money goes to the general fund. It doesn't come in and go to an energy project, it doesn't come in and go to the energy committee. It comes in and it goes to the general fund. And then we have to ask the board of finance for the appropriations.
And then, not to get a specific letter from one person that was angry, but to say that the energy advisory committee or commission, whatever, are they still together that they're going to make the recommendation? Are we making that decision? Do you know that yet? It seemed to be challenging, and I just want to, I know we've had words that the energy commission is not going to be together.
We're never asked our advice.
Okay.
Rich has cut us off completely. I agree with this letter, and Butch does too, the majority of the committee. Our opinion isn't sought after ever. We think the monitoring is the big priority, and should be, not the LED lighting. Systems have been down all over town. You don't know if they're down for a day or a week without the monitoring. We lose the Z-Rex, and we lose the solar that's coming in. I mean, I've got it on my house. Sure, you look and check the system's running. But when you've got it spread all over, you really can't do that. When you've got a system up on the roof of a school, that's where the inverter is. You can't check it without monitoring.
There's still possibly be half for one thing and half for the other?
I think there's only 18,000 total.
We're, we're in a race a little bit. First come, first served is how I read the letter that came in. Are we getting the 13/5 no matter what, as long as it's the general fund?
You have to have it to go towards something viable.
Right, and your MOE tells us, tells somebody what we're targeting?
They have their guidelines as to what it can be paid for. And lighting is one of them.
Will we have the lighting at the school, one too?
Yes. You know, I mean, we're, we're sitting here being criticized over semantics as to which pocket it comes from is paid for. Both of them are happening. One has to be done before the other. And we're discussing priority. And if the chairman feels that they want to come and discuss something, then come and discuss it.
Yeah, I don't, that's why I want to.
I think Neil was just getting clarification. I don't think he was doing any semantics. He was just getting clarification, which is our job.
Four weeks, and I'd like to see what we can go through as part of.
The people that are involved, you know, all, not, all the people that are involved, none of them are here.
I'm here.
Team's.
I'm a member of the committee, been a member of the committee for five years. The chairman's out of town right now. And Richard, be honest, you don't talk to me, Gary, or the chairman, Butch. We could knock on your door all day long, and we're not going to be able to talk about energy committee matters because you've cut us out. You, you haven't asked us a question in many, many months. You, you go off and do what you think is right. The committee started before you were first selectman. There's some expertise on the committee that goes beyond your expertise in the energy field. At the very least, as an advisory board, we should be able to advise. And that's not been happening for a long, long time. That's why Gary wrote this letter.
Quite a while ago, Peter Kowaleski was designated as the liaison from the energy committee to the board of selectmen.
True.
I talked to Peter. I talked to Dennis Milanovich, who is the project manager, town engineer. Those are the people that I'm giving feedback from.
It's your choices first elections to decide who you want to take advice from.
Dennis has gone, Dennis has gone to your meetings.
Yeah.
So I don't know where you feel the communication is, is dropping when.
We've been pushing the monitoring for a year now, and you've ignored us. And now you want to do the lighting, which we think is a joke compared to the monitoring. And you put something like this online and let it go without the monitoring.
Until the email was received today was the first time that I had heard any objection to that when the email was sent today. That was the first time I heard that.
Okay.
Okay, now, like I said, Peter Kowaleski, a long time ago, and everybody agreed that he was the liaison to the, to the board of selectmen. Dennis Milanovich, the project engineer who's attending your meetings.
Again, you're, you're first electman, you get to make these decisions. You don't have to ask your advisory board their advice. And I, I'm just saying, I think you're making a huge mistake not asking the advisory board their advice on quite a few different issues involving all these projects. Bruce Cartier, at one meeting quite a few months ago, a comment was made to Bruce that, well, once you've got everything up and, you know, started, you're happy now. It gets taken over by the first selectman and the building inspector, town engineer. And he said, no, I want to see the baby grow up. That's how we feel. If it doesn't get done right, there's consequences, financial consequences. And that's what we're worried about. The, if there's much less money saved in the end because of the way the project was done, I believe the energy committee will take a lot of that blame. And it won't be our fault because we're not involved in the project. That's, that's where this came from.
But you are involved. You have, you have a direct line right in straight communication with the project manager. Dennis is the one running the projects. Dennis is the one with the engineering.
Dennis made this decision for the LED lights?
I was told by Dennis and Peter that this would be the best way to handle this because of moving forward with the monitoring through standard solar.
Well, it hasn't been done yet. The MOU is out there, that can be changed. This doesn't have to happen this way. Now you know that there is some concern about it. All three of you know that there's some concern. You can stop this. You can change this. We've checked on that. It doesn't have to happen this way. There could be more discussion about it.
I went to the meeting when Dennis was here. Peter wasn't here, so I don't know what got back to him. But I think it was Butch put this together, and it was all the geothermal and of the 17 million. We thought there was TELP money left, was 406,000, and I know you were here. But it sounded like that night Dennis was under the understanding that this would all be covered. And I thought the last meeting we had on the 13th, it was the three of us were going to get back to what the 13/5 was. We had a, I thought your feeling was this monitoring was good.
Yeah, and I.
It still could be. And that's mostly what I wanted to clarify. Did DJ and you and I have to pass this? Or is it just, you, again, you?
I think it's already done. I thought it was already done. I don't know.
Well, on the 13th, I thought it was coming back to the, the three of us. And now it's done or not done. Where are we with that, is I guess my question.
When are we able to discussion until we can have the project manager here to explain why we're doing what we're doing?
Sure. That's what I was looking for more than a, a letter that.
Is it already done?
The lights. The lights are there. It's semantics on where it gets paid from. Does it get paid from the TELP or does it get paid from the grant? We were trying to take advan, full advantage of the grant.
Is there money now in the general fund from that grant?
Hasn't come in, yeah.
Looking at it, I guess. So I think you explained that to me.
Correct. But I, I mean, I, I would recommend, you know, table it for the next meeting so the project manager can come in and explain it.
In a way, now, it's kind of a done deal because the light's already in, we have to pay for it.
The lights were going to be paid, I'm saying it's semantics. The lights were going to be paid for either out of the tax exempt lease or the monitoring's paid on the tax exempt lease.
Correct.
We sent the, we sent the memorandum into the green bank to take full advantage of the money that was available to us.
Correct.
And we sent it in for the lights.
We couldn't get the monitoring system at that time?
The monitoring system's about $7,000, and we had $13,000 available to us. We wanted to take advantage of the maximum amount that was available to us.
And you couldn't break it up, had to be one thing?
That's how it was explained. But it's, but what I'm saying, it's, it's semantics as to what's going on because. Because both are going to be done and both are going to be paid for. It's just a matter of how they were paid for.
And when, when it was...
And the $13,000 comes back and goes to the general fund, which then has to be transferred into the projects.
Appropriating.
Appropriating.
Is appropriate.
Correct. So, the bottom line is we're getting $13,000 that's going to go into a project fund, whether it pays for monitoring or whether it pays for lights.
Or other things.
Or other things.
I mean, the Energy Committee has other ideas, too. Again, we haven't been consulting a long, long time. It's not done. It's not over. There's a lot more we can do. But only if the powers that be want us to.
Doesn't that be the liaison's responsibility to deal with you guys? I mean, you have a liaison. They should be talking to you in your meetings. You guys should be telling Peter what you're looking for.
Yeah, what, well, we do, and it doesn't always get to Richard.
On that side.
You and Richard have whatever relationship they have, but Peter does what Peter does. He doesn't come to the Energy Committee and ask any advice either. Peter makes his own decisions, always has.
Maybe we should make a motion to table it to the 22nd and ask Peter, Butch, Gene, Dennis, and everybody to come. And just for clarification?
I think so. Certainly, I don't find fault with where the money went if we're trying to get it. And I do have some concern that I'm hearing that the Energy Advisory Committee is being disbanded. That's something, when I first got into this, instead of Board of Ed, that I always thought was the most exciting thing in town. And I still think it's the best thing that Stafford's going to look proud of stuff when we're all out of here. DJ and I are finishing up here. Four weeks, I'd like to see the things we worked hard. I go into lots of energy meetings, show up that we voted it in if it could happen. And I don't disagree with Richard's use of it because of all that money. I just think the communication is not getting both ways of meeting.
That's all it is, is communication.
We can get those guys invited to the 22nd meeting, start to eat. Bring a snack, and we might be here a little bit to hear that. But that would be fine with me on the old business.
Making motions to table it to the 22nd?
Sure. Yeah, I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
New business?
No, we did old business.
No, are we on new business now?
Yeah, we're on new business now.
We think we cleared the new business.
We cleared the new business.
And we don't have to read. Letter, letter was covered enough.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for it, John.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
We only have one more meeting. No, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just ask, when, when do we get out of there officially? The election's on a school day?
You're still in office for two weeks.
It's all... Hold on. So... So we do have a meeting the 12th?
You guys are in office until the 17th.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Who's counting? Well...